Will now call the common council meeting of March 30th to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
Here.
Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And since everybody's asking everything of our health officer, I'll ask you to do the pledge as well.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just in case anybody is streaming, we do have two of the aldermen on video, which is allowed by state rules, given the circumstances we're experiencing. We're going to start with number three, and that is an update on the pandemic.
With the nose there.
Got it. Okay. So as of today, we have 15 confirmed positive cases here in Oak Creek. We are seeing, as we expected, kind of an increase in the rate of positive cases coming in. We were kind of trickling in the last couple of weeks, and over the past five days, I believe, we've had one every day. In Milwaukee County currently, there are 663 cases. There have been 10 deaths in the county. We have not had any deaths in Oak Creek at this point. The latest numbers from the state, where there were 1,221 cases in the state as of today, with 14 reported deaths. Many of the recent positive cases that were coming in, we're finding they are patients that are very critical ill and are in the hospital. I believe that that is because the testing priorities have been restructured a little bit by the state. So we're seeing critically ill patients are the top tier of testing, so they're being tested more often than other patients. Other testing groups that have priority for testing currently are healthcare workers, clients who live in congregate settings, such as a long-term care facility, in a nursing home, or who might be in jail, basically in close contacts with other people, trying to prevent that, a big outbreak in the facility. So if individuals are not in those categories, they are either not being tested, or their tests are taking a lot longer to be processed at this time, just because there's limited capacity of labs to process those tests. So I think it's really important to emphasize that that doesn't mean that other individuals who are less ill or who aren't hospitalized are not sick. That just means that we're not seeing those test results come through, and we're really trying to get that message out, that we really have to assume that we have a lot more positive cases across the state, especially in Milwaukee County, as we're seeing a lot of cases, and people need to act accordingly. So really pushing that messaging to please stay home, of social distancing, avoid nonessential work, and trips out of their home and things like that. The Health Department has been really running at capacity to try to keep up all of this. So tomorrow, we have some additional temporary staff coming onboard to help us. We were lucky that the two school nurses are able to come over and help us, and we're also going to be training three of the library staff to come and do some of our more administrative tasks that are pretty easy for them to do. So we're really looking forward to having that extra help, and hopefully getting a little bit of a break for my Health Department staff. We are continuing to work with our community partners that I've mentioned before. So our long-term care facilities, businesses, healthcare providers, child cares. As the state is getting new messaging out, or as they have questions, we're in pretty regular communication with all of those groups to make sure that their questions are answered, that they know how to keep their residents, or their staff, or their clients as safe as possible. And we are working very closely with Leslie on continuous messaging for the community, for staff, for some of those groups that we talked about, really, like I said, reinforcing that safer-at-home message that the governor is putting out. We are also releasing that daily graphic that I've sent out a couple of times. It's on all of our social media and on our website, just with updated case numbers and any additional changes that come out related to our community or related to the state. So we're trying to keep the community updated as much as we can. I know that Chief Krasik's got some information to share too, but any questions for me about the Health Department response?
Any questions for Darcy? Mike?
Alder.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, Steve. Go ahead. Darcy, Alderman Kerkowski, 1st District. Darcy, is it safe to assume that you guys are being, kind of like you're bifurcated, with you're being proactive with getting information out and how to avoid getting sick or catching stuff? So you're basically just being proactive in that, and then with regards to sick individuals, you're being reactive. So there's really no in-between, is there? I mean, you're not, it may sound kind of, maybe a little bit dumb here when you say proactive and reactive, but everything else in your department has kind of come to a standstill, because you're being, like I say, you're being proactive in this venue and then reactive here, right? I mean, they're kind of clearly defined. I mean, you don't have much gray matter here. I mean, you're not going out and doing little things.
Right, we're not going out into the community. I mean, we are still doing some of the other activities that we have to do. So, you know, we're still following up on other communicable diseases, because even though COVID is the big story, people are still getting other communicable diseases, and it's still important that we respond to those. We're also following up with animal bites, because that's something that has to be done in a timely manner. And then if we have any urgent other complaints or environmental things that are coming up, we have been trying to partner with inspections or the sanitarian to get some support in those areas. But anything that's not urgent or mandated that we respond right away is currently on hold. Yeah.
Thank you. Mike?
Alderman Toman, 4th District. Darcy, is there a, you know, I realize some people are less sick, some people are sicker than others. I realize that, to a degree. Is there, once you get this virus, is there a typical period where, what is the typical period where you're very... What's the word? Contagious, that's the word I'm looking for. And is there a typical recovery time, too, after you get the virus?
So unfortunately, we're seeing quite a variety in those two things. We believe, based on some research that they've done in other countries, and what they've seen so far in this country is that individuals can be contagious two days before their symptoms start, which is partly why it's so hard to stop. And then they're contagious basically the entire time that they're sick. So for some people, they're only sick, they have very mild symptoms, and they're only sick for a couple of days. You know, they just stay home and they get better. Other people, we've seen some people that are sick for a couple of weeks. Of course, some need to be hospitalized. We know that individuals who have some underlying health conditions are at higher risk for some of those severe cases, but we've also seen some healthy people who become very ill, and it's not clear why some people become more ill than others. We also know that the period after a person is exposed to COVID, they can become sick anywhere from two to 14 days after being exposed. And so that's also tricky, and that's why you hear a lot about us asking people to quarantine in their home for 14 days after they've been exposed, because we know they could become sick anytime during that period. So it's quite a range, and some people are really being asked to stay home for a long time if they're potentially ill.
So in general, after you get sick in two weeks, you should be out of the woods, so to speak, or close to it?
Yeah, I would say most people are recovered by about two weeks. You know, a few people, again, if they have some kind of compromised immune system or something like that, or if they have to be hospitalized or on a ventilator, would take longer, but most people are recovered within that two-week period.
Chief Krasik?
Want to touch base real quick on some of our EOC and Unified EOC activities. The city's Emergency Operations Center is active at this point. We have been meeting regularly, receiving briefings from public health to address the situation specific to the city of Oak Creek. Right now, the key emphasis, obviously, once the structure of the EOC was established, is to work on the messaging to the community from a governmental standpoint, as well as just the standard public health messaging to the citizens as far as the stay-at-home messaging. We've also been looking at the logistics component of this event and how it relates to the city of Oak Creek and the affected departments, eyes, or necessary protective equipment. The county has also activated the Unified EOC. It's made up of fire, police, law enforcement, governmental agencies, and obviously, the health officers throughout the county. That group, now understanding that this isn't a singular event for the city of Oak Creek, but rather affects the whole world, having a county group in place certainly gives us some strength in numbers. There's the addition of reading that allows for greater collaboration and resource sharing. We are active in the Unified EOC, and I found that it has been helpful to us on our local level as we prepare to address the circumstances. The Director of FEMA, this past weekend, issued guidance for emergency management directors, and essentially set out seven steps that all directors should be taking for their communities at this time. Here, real quickly, the seven steps are mitigation, the message that's going out from public health, the stay-at-home message, integration of emergency management and public health. Proud to say, the collaboration has been very strong between law enforcement, fires, the government agencies, with public health directing our activity. It's been a very strong collaboration. Hospital bed capacity, alternate care sites, ventilators, and search personnel were also identified as areas to seek guidance and obtain numbers. The county EOC has worked hard in all those areas, and they are being addressed. And finally, it's the management of personal protective equipment. From the fire's perspective, the issue that keeps us awake at night right now is, is there enough PPE to address the situation as it goes on? Understanding we are doing things internally, as well as through the county, to manage our PPE protective equipment, but they are utilized wisely to anticipate for a long-term event. So both entities, your local EOC and the county EOC, are working in tandem to attempt to mitigate this.
Questions for Chief Krasik?
Actually, for either Chief Krasik or Darcy. You mentioned making sure you have enough of everything. One of the things that comes to mind is possibly blood or plasma. So what if the blood center was in need of a location to do a blood drive, and they were looking maybe for doing something like that at the community center? Is that something that you'd have to work through or think through, given the state that we're in? Or is that something that they would have to kind of say, no, we can't do that at this time? Sorry, Darcy?
Darcy? I know there's a critical shortage of blood right now, and so I know that the blood center and the other blood donation centers have been really working to get volunteers in. I think probably, you know, the best-case scenario is that people would go to their centers, where they really have full control over making sure that, you know, they're social distancing, that they're cleaning effectively, you know, their staff are most comfortable there. But, you know, if there was an approach, or if there was a request to do it at the community center or a facility, we would certainly work with them to think through how to do that safely.
I'll recommend that they work through here first before setting it up.
Okay.
Just wanted to get the, thank you.
Anyone else? Questions?
Chief, Alderman Dukenyak, 3rd District. Have you seen a significant spike in emergency calls these past two weeks?
I want to speak specifically for the Oak Creek Fire Department.
Correct.
We have not seen a significant spike in emergency calls in our area. Now, that is over a rather small data set. We want to trend that backwards into the start of the year, and then maybe make some projections after another month or so of data. But there has been somewhat of a decrease over the last several weeks. That said, we participate in the COVID response plan in Milwaukee County. We have specialized units throughout Milwaukee County, paramedic units, and alternate response vehicles that do respond to patients that are screened as potential COVID patients. Those units, and they have responded into the city of Oak Creek, are obviously quite busy at this time. So I think as you see this event proceed, and maybe the distribution of patients begins to spread throughout Milwaukee County, you're certainly seeing that the prevalence of those rigs in our call volume in the city of Oak Creek could increase at that point.
Increase, okay. And given that limited information that you have, Chief, can you give us an idea of how many days inventory of PPE equipment that you have?
That's a great question. Our logistics team has been doing some projections to see how long our current equipment stores may last, based on call projection. So if we base it on a smaller number, we have seen windows of two to four weeks. As that call volume increases, certainly those stores will run out much quicker than that.
Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Just very quickly, I don't really have any questions, but I just have a couple of comments. It is absolutely stunning what's gone on in the city of Oak Creek in the last two weeks, and I want to personally thank everybody that has mobilized and turned this around almost like a military operation to transform the city. The general public does not see what goes on behind the scenes, but the organization from protective services, health, IT, the clerk's office, treasurer's office, finance, right up and down the line, right down to the last person, from our ASA pool to DPW, everybody's pulled together and been very understanding. This is an unprecedented time, and you keep hearing, we have to figure out what to do, and the best thing we can do is listen to our health officers and our protective services. This is our best defense, and if you really want to help the effort, stay at home. Do the social distancing, the disinfectants, everything that's being suggested. That's how you can best help this, so we can get a handle on it. It's about slowing it down, so we don't overwhelm our services. But contingency plans that the city's put in place, it's quite amazing in a very short time that they did this, and they're not just looking at, what do we do today? They're looking weeks down the line, which is part of the reason we have this meeting. But I want to personally thank you all on behalf of all the citizens of Oak Creek. And I know a lot of your departments never get any spotlight on them, and this probably isn't the spotlight you want on them. But let me tell you, when it became your turn, you definitely stepped up. You took the ball, you ran with it, and we're in a far better position as a city. So thank you, everybody, over the last two weeks and the efforts you've put in. So, okay. Moving on to new business. Now, we're going to go a little bit out of order here. We're going to take number four last, and number four kind of culminates the whole thing. So we're going to start with item five. It's consideration of a motion to approve the city of Oak Creek's Personnel Manual Regarding the Families' First Coronavirus Response Act: Expanded Family and Medical Leave. So Andrew, you want to take that away for us, please?
I'm going to kick this off, because in addition to the public health response, the emergency response, the external focusing items in the community that many qualified professionals are handling on behalf of normal citizens in the country and in the world, there are well-intentioned legislative measures that have been taken, both at the state level and the federal level, that are, which can't be overstated enough, very, very complex. And my preamble this evening with these policies that we'll go over is in an attempt to try to clarify and distinguish kind of the avenues that we're working down here. And what I mean by that is, let's first start with the state and the governor's safer-at-home order. The buzzwords out there now in all sectors of the economy, local government, not to the exclusion of local government, is what is essential and what is nonessential. And all essential businesses, I should say, all nonessential businesses, you think nonessential? You follow the safer-at-home order. Local governments, almost in total categorically, were exempted in that governor's order, the safer-at-home order. We determined, and you saw in emails that I've been sending on to the organization, we deem all of local government essential, especially in a time of crisis like this. We have library staff helping out with elections. We have DPW staff doing this or that for elections or other measures that need to be taken in the community. Folks in other departments helping the city's Health Department, as you saw. It's an all-hands-on-deck approach. All local government employees in many other communities are taking this liberally to mean the same, are meeting the essential government function which was carved out of the governor's order. That's the state side of things. Leave that aside. What Judy and Bridget and I will move through now is the federal legislative measures that have been taken, or that have been put in place and signed by the president, and will become effective on April 1. And that is, there's kind of two components to that that we're concerned about this evening. And what I'm talking about is the Families' First Coronavirus Response Act. I think it's the FFRCA? FF-CRA, all right. Major components that we need to consider from a human resources management standpoint contained in that legislation were, one, an extension of the Family Medical Leave Act. We've all heard about the FMLA, and we know that that's generally a good thing, that people can take advantage of to care for self or care for loved ones in serious injury or illness. That is being extended, and Judy and Bridget are going to go over how that is going to be extended. The second component of the FF-CRA that we concern ourselves with here is an extended paid leave, which is, as Judy will go over, additional paid leave for folks to contend with this issue and other nuances of this issue, or other items that are coming about because of this issue. Maybe they're not directly related to somebody being, you know, coming down with COVID or having somebody in the house that they have to care for with COVID, but things like childcare and those type of things. We are in the midst of taking, as best we can, a long-term view on the HR policies that we put in place now. We're doing so deliberately, because we don't know where this finish line is. If we knew we had a box of one month or 45 days to work in, we would bring forward probably some more certain recommendations about how this would work. We just don't know how long this is going to last. We don't know what other legislative measures are going to be taken to, we've already heard they're talking about extending, maybe even these leaves, additional leave that is being granted with what we'll go over tonight. So in terms of our internal focusing of employees, keeping not only the public safe, having the first responders and emergency responders and healthcare providers being able to stay healthy, and all those measures we're taking with our internal work groups, we also have to take a look at, you know, kind of keeping not only our public healthy, but them healthy to be able to be here and be responsive. So we'll get to that resolution. We'll talk a little bit more about specific carve-outs for these policies in terms of emergency responders and healthcare providers, to make sure that we make the public available of those resources and public services. But first, let's just walk through kind of the new leave extensions that are part and parcel of that federal legislation. Fair?
So, good evening, Mayor, council members. Judy Rogers from Human Resource, I think you all know me. To begin with, just where Andrew left off, yes, President Trump signed on March 18th, Families' First Coronavirus Response Act. That act actually goes from April 1st to December 31st, 2020. So it's a long period of time. There are two provisions that we are concerned with as a municipality. And by the way, this was for employer...
Hold the microphone.
A little closer. This was for employers who had under 500 employees. So we fell into that bucket, because we have under 500 employees. The two provisions are, first, the employee-paid sick leave, and the second provision is the expanded family and medical leave. I passed out or hand out a kind of follow-along sheet that'll kind of condense this and make it easier for us to walk through. So the first three items, the first three qualifying reasons for leave, all are under the sick-paid leave time. So number one, they're quarantined by federal, state, or local order. So they will receive 100% of their regular rate of pay for two-week period, 80 hours. If they're part-time, whatever they normally get paid in a two-week period. Two, if they're advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine related to COVID-19, they would also get 80 hours, 100% paid at their regular rate of pay. The third qualifying reason, they're experiencing COVID-19 symptoms and are seeking a medical diagnosis. Now, they can get a medical diagnosis through our telemedicine called Teladoc. So we're not requiring our employees to go into a medical doctor or get in a hospital if they can't. That is an alternative to our employees to call in to Teladoc. Again, they will get 80 hours paid at 100% of their regular rate of pay. That's the bulk of where we think a lot of our employees will fall into, if at all. The next category is part of the expanded family leave, as well as the sick-paid leave. It's caring for an individual who is subject to an order described in one, item one, or item two. They would still get 80 hours, but it is at 2/3 their regular rate of pay. The fifth qualifying reason is caring for a child. This is the piece of the expanded family medical leave that is really the heart of the expansion. And that is, it is only available, the additional 10 weeks is only available for instance of where they're caring for a child that is no longer in school, because the school is closed, or childcare or daycare has been closed. And it is only for 2/3 of their regular pay, and that goes also for the next 10 weeks, should they have to take the whole 12-week period. Qualifying reason number six is kind of a placeholder by the federal government in case they come across something else that they need to put in this category. Right now, there is nothing else that has been issued from Health and Human Services or the treasurer, whatever. So number six is just a placeholder at this time. So we're really dealing with items one through five. Number five is the one that could cause an expansion to have FMLA at 12 weeks. Now, this isn't for regular FMLA illnesses, or should they become isolated because they have contracted COVID-19? That would be under regular FMLA and diagnosed as a serious health condition, if they're isolated. Not quarantined, but isolated. Are there any questions?
Questions for Judy?
If I, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, if I could chime in on what's a very clearly confusing topic administratively. So these six qualifying reasons, there are different buckets that people's symptoms and scenarios will fit into, and that's what we have spent time the last couple of weeks reading, reviewing Department of Labor information on it, reviewing information from various attorney's offices and people that are doing their own interpretations throughout, as this legislation continues to come out to us. So we really have the 100%, you know, employee sick pay, and then we have the 2/3 that is through the extended family medical leave. So two different buckets that we have to be dealing with and working our way through. Something else, as it relates to this act, we are required to have these policies in place. So while the act is really out there on its own as one thing, we need to have policies in place and adopted in order to continue going forward with this mandate. That's why you have two separate policies. We thought that might be easier for us to administer if they were in their separate buckets, so we can help the employees through that process. The other item on a financial aspect, as it relates to this act, while they put out tax credits, the federal government put out tax credits for these businesses, local governments are not a part of that. So this is a mandate that we will not be receiving at this time, the tax credits that the businesses are. What we have been told we are able to do right now is not pay the city's portion of the Social Security tax, which is 6.2%. So we get to save, keep, whatever you want to say, 6.2%. That will definitely not make us whole throughout this process, but it was something that we know there is a fix in some legislation right now in the Senate. know there is a fix in some legislation right now in the Senate. We just haven't heard that it's been approved or moved forward as of right now.
One other, one other point to mention, I think. By and large, with the, with the Family Medical Leave Act, we have an underlying family and medical leave act. So whether this was enacted or not, we always have to contend with the instance of caring for self or somebody in the, in the family with injury or illness. So this isn't that far of a leap with what we're talking about here. It's really the paid, the extended paid sick leave of 80 hours that we're contending with. And that would have been a nice tiny little box to work with. We probably could have worked on that and been fine out the other side of this. But, and I don't mean this in an inhumane way, certainly, you know, I could consider myself one of these folks. It's really the childcare piece that is the, the real game changer here. Whereas it broadens the rationale for one taking, an employee taking advantage of the family medical leave available to him or her. And Judy or Bridget, correct me if I'm wrong, this isn't a situation where there is a very, very minimal litmus test or documentation an employer could ask an employee for to take advantage of this leave. So we can't say, go prove it, that you don't, your childcare is closed, or your wife can't watch them, or your, your husband can't watch them. I think there's, there's, it's, it's a little, it's very, the very nature of the, of the title of the act is it's Families First. They want people to stay home, they want people to care for their loved ones, but there, it's not as though this is a give and take of, well, you know, show us, show your work. That's not the case. And just correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's kind of the prevailing thought on, specifically the childcare, but also that, you know, the, the medical piece of this.
Yes, you're correct, Andrew. The idea with the, with the family part or the children care was because of the closing of the schools and many childcare centers, this pushed a lot of employees, not just at the city here, and there's not a lot, let me take that back, at the city, but it pushed employees to have to make a decision between trying to work from home and take care of their kids. That's, can be hard sometimes depending on the ages of kids. So the legislation was intended to give employers a choice that if they had to stay home to take care of their kids because the school is closed, this would allow them to do that like any kind of other FMLA. This is only though from April 1 through December 31st of 2020.
Questions, Steve?
Bridget, because this is so case-specific, COVID-19, is there any indication that any costs associated with this would be either in a present or future stimulus package? And I, you're probably going to say, I don't know. So that's okay. But the other, the other--
Gee, I had another question, I'm sorry. I forgot. Well, you answered the first one.
Sure, I'll go for the first one. I don't know. But we are preparing. We are preparing on all fronts, whether it is staff time administratively as we are preparing, yeah, the emergency management, we are all tracking time, tracking resources, tracking items that we are buying in excess to, not in excess unnecessarily, but that we need the hand sanitizer or whatnot. We are tracking all of those expenses, all of our employee time, both regular as well as any overtime that's dealing with COVID-19. And we are definitely watching every piece of legislation right now that's being proposed and approved so that we can figure out if we can recoup some of our funds.
I did think of the other one. With regards to not having to pay the social security now, is that, are they, government going to come back and say, well, you didn't have to pay it now, but now you, now you have to pay it for the period that you didn't pay it? Because obviously, social security isn't going to get their money. We know what that's going to lead to on a whole separate issue.
I'm, I'm sure that that's something they could say. I wouldn't put it past that, you know, to happen, but the, we do have to still withhold those, the employee side of the social security. It's simply the 6.2 of the employer side that we're withholding. So they're still getting some money.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, Tillman, 4th District. Is all of this that we're seeing here tonight, like in this item and then the next two, and then the, in the, let's see here, and then the resolution, is all this language federally mandated?
Yes.
Every single bit, the city has no power to tweak anything or, so we're required to adopt this?
The law, yes, the law has been implemented for employers who have 500 or less employees. They do give us one decision that we could decide at our level, which is what the resolution tonight is about. But that was pretty much the only open end. Everything else, it's pretty much like giving a person time off if they would have been sick except they use their PTO. This is like replacing that so they don't have to, to use it. However, please, me and Marie and Bridget will be monitoring. If there's someone is sick and it's not necessarily related to COVID-19, the same rules still apply as far as using your PTO or sick time or whatever. So remember, this is only if it's COVID-19 and only for these specific reasons, qualifying reasons. So we still have to do our jobs at weeding through and saying, no, this is regular FMLA or this is just a normal sick time or whatever.
Yes, that was my, that was part of my next question. Because from, to follow up on what Andrew said, is, is there, so there actually is a level of proof involved in some of this? Like, say, for example, in the qualifying reasons, like number three seems pretty broad-based to me.
Yeah, so number three, we had discussed the way that we would implement, and we, I just didn't go into all of the details because that's kind of granular for you guys, but the way we would look at that is that someone's, you know, called us, said they were feeling sick, blah, blah, blah. And we said, did you seek a medical diagnosis? If they say yes, Teladoc, I went through Teladoc and they issued me a letter that I did was trying to, then we would reverse their paid PTO time that they used and substitute the, you know, however many days it took them to get that diagnosis. So we would.
That's going to be a tough job for, to go through this process because, you know, this COVID-19 and coronavirus in general, a common cold is part of these symptoms. So I guess unless you're actually tested for this strain of, of the virus, you wouldn't actually know if you had COVID-19. Obviously, you're going to go for the test if you had the symptoms.
Right. That's part of the triage that different medical professions are doing. One of the things that Teladoc has sent us is that they do that, they ask the person certain questions and whatever, and based on their response to those, they'll either advance them to the next level, tell them to get into, to their doctor, help them get appointments and things like that. So it's like, it's a leveling, it's not like just shooting everyone into the hospital system. It's trying to, as Darcy has stated, get to the most severe ill employees so that they, a person, so they can be taken care of first.
Right, I wanted to make sure you didn't have the impression that like Teladoc was just handing out letters saying, you have COVID-19. That's definitely, we've actually seen the opposite. We have seen letters come from Teladoc saying, this individual, you know, simply has symptoms of common cold or whatnot in order for them to come back, you know, into the office.
Right, we've seen--
And the health professionals, they actually do have a criteria to determine if you're on the path for the, the COVID-19. You need temperature of a certain amount, the cough and so on and so forth. And you guys could expound on that much better than I.
Just one other thing, because I don't want to forget this, because when I mentioned there's only one game changer and that is, is really the childcare piece, that's, I don't want to call it problematic because this is, again, a family-focused policy and we are that in our organization, but the underlying FMLA, a month ago, before COVID-19 and all of this reactive legislation, regular FMLA doesn't guarantee you pay, it guarantees you leave without loss of job status, et cetera, pay, et cetera. So, you know, a month ago, if somebody had a qualifying condition or a loved one did, they would be granted, you know, up to 12 weeks of pay under FMLA, 12 weeks of leave under FMLA, but there's no pay for that leave by the taxpayers of the city. That's where this, not only is it, does it extend to the childcare piece, it provides two-thirds pay for up to 12 weeks. And the difference being what we talked about earlier, for, for, for private sector businesses, small businesses, that's, that's awesome for them because they are somehow going to be made whole for that two-thirds pay. The local governments at this time, barring a legislative fix, which we have heard is pending, doesn't get reimbursed that. So when we're talking about the discretion we do have, which is the resolution, and Judy mentioned this, we have, we have discretion. Keep in mind, this is right now on the city's dime, two-thirds on the FMLA qualifying issues, including childcare. That's why we have the carve-out for certain emergency responders and healthcare providers in our resolution to say, this doesn't out of hand, right out of the gate, apply to you. It's more of a, we have a, more of a qualifying lens with them, if you will, than we would somebody else trying to utilize these policies. Because why? We need them here, right? And that's really the, that's really the, the crux of the resolution is to say, you know, we can't go to the nth degree of the legislation with certain groups of people here due to the nature of their work. And there is a specific carve-out in the federal law that allows you as a local government body to say who those people are in our organization. And that's really the crux of the resolution. And there is some discretion there. We can talk about that when we, when we get to that.
I guess I do have a question regarding the resolution. To me, it's pretty clear why we're doing this and what it's about. The, the order itself, federal order runs through December 31st, 2020. We're going to make this, this change, this addition to the personnel manual. Do we have to put a sunset on it of December 31st, 2020, or will we come back and rescind it or extend it depending on what the circumstances are later in the year?
We, we shouldn't have to do that because we're putting these in as amendments to our personnel policy. So we're not embedding them into the policy manual itself that's going to be stood up somewhere in May or June timeframe. So this allows us to have the same sunset that the federal government does. That's why we created the separate policies. And they each say April 1st to December 31st.
Okay. I would suggest, though, that, and we'll, we'll confer, obviously, with, with Bula Vetter or Melissa Attorney Carles on this, if it were to extend, we might have to come back--
Yes.
--and talk about that because it has a sunset in here already.
Oh, okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Any other further questions? Greg, Ken, sorry, I don't mean to--
I have a couple of questions if you can hear me.
Yeah.
I think Judy answered my first question. I was just curious if this 80 was after they exhaust all their sick time or this is before that all happens, correct?
Yes, that is a great question. This, you are not allowed to require the employee to use their paid time in order to use the sick time. So the sick time comes first.
Okay.
And then anything after that.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question was this, is this, is this kind of a one and done thing? You're just using as an example, somebody takes 80 hours to care for a child, not knowing the projection of how long this is actually going to last. Say they do that and then they unfortunately get sick themselves, do they, then are they able to take another 80 hours under a different qualifying reason?
Right now, the way that the legislation is written is the one and done. They use the 80 hours, they don't get another use of the 80 hours again at another time. Now, that's today. I guess they could put in number six and say it means this, I don't know, but as of now, they use it, they're done, they would go to their own PTO time or sick days.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, anything? Can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm good. I don't have any questions.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, look for motion on five. All right, you got something, Rich?
I just, Andrew, did you say we're going to go and revisit the resolution or have discussion on the resolution?
We, we, I think, did we formally amend, we're going to take that one last?
Yes.
Or we're going to take last.
So, so, okay, here, let me give you kind of the, the logic of pass, pass policy number one related to extended family medical leave, pass policy number two related to the employee paid sick leave. If you do nothing, those apply to everyone. The resolution then comes into the backend and says, those apply to everyone except these types of positions in the City of Oak Creek. So right now, we didn't carve out any language for any certain groups that might fall under, under emergency responders or healthcare providers in the policies. The resolution is the mechanism for you to do that.
So they will then be included in, in this mandate of, of leave?
Until you take action on the resolution this evening.
Ah, okay. So four just kind of solidifies what we're going to approve in five or six?
Well, we move the resolution to the bottom. So you're going to, you're going to pass the policy number one, pass the policy number two, and then you're going to create exceptions to those policies via the resolution.
Okay, I just, I'm confused as heck on this, so please bear with me. The emergency responders and the healthcare providers' bottom line are going to be included in this, correct?
No. The federal legislation gave the opportunity for local government entities and others the ability to define who their emergency responders are and their healthcare providers are, and specifically carve them out of the provisions of expanded family medical leave and expanded sick leave. Because again, as we talked, we talked about earlier, these policies, how do I put this here? We certainly need to avail ourselves to those people, those emergency people--
Oh, okay.
--to do the work during this time.
Okay.
So while this is a little more liberally construed in favor of the employee, the policies are--
Okay.
--to make sure that they, it's Families First, we know that that has to be kind of drawn back for certain groups of people who we need to respond to the--
Those are just critically essential people that we could not afford to--
It's probably a better way to put it.
--lose or have take that leave.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Exactly right.
Thank you.
All right, motion on five then.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the City of Oak Creek's Personnel Manual Regarding the Families First Coronavirus Response Act Extended, Expanded Family and Medical Leave.
Ms. Kalskiel, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dupeak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye. Okay. Item six, consideration of a motion to approve the City of Oak Creek's Personnel Manual Regarding the Families First Coronavirus Response Act Employee Paid Sick Leave. Judy again, or Bridget?
Same thing. This is the same sick leave that we've been talking about. We've just been, we had to separate it out into those two policies. So we just approved the FMLA part. Now we are asking you to approve the 80-hour paid sick leave.
Yeah. Any questions, comments? Motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the City of Oak Creek's Personnel Manual Regarding the Families First Coronavirus Response Act Employee Paid Sick Leave.
Ms. Kalskiel, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dupeak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
And that will bring us back to item four, and it's consideration of a resolution defining the emergency responder and healthcare provider under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and authorizing the necessary amendments to the City of Oak Creek Personnel Manual to incorporate the FF-CRA and the related provisions of the Expanded Family and Medical Leave and Employee Paid Sick Leave Act. Andrew?
Just to, just to remind everyone and to frame this discussion, we're dealing with only the federal piece. The governor's order, whether you're essential or non-essential, that's the state stuff. We've determined that local government employees are essential. That's not what-- That's not what this is. What we're dealing with here are very specific or more, more surgical carve-outs to the two policies that you were just, that you just had to approve because the federal government said you had to, which is fine. The two policies we just spoke of are specific carve-outs to exempt emergency responders and healthcare providers. What the resolution does is makes a recommendation to you on who those people, those types are in the City of Oak Creek organization. I will say that all communities in Wisconsin, many across the state or the country, I would think, are going to be taking these very actions over the next week or two. What there is no absolute consistency on is who should all be included in these. Because you can make an argument that your management team, your, you know, your non-sworn police personnel, your public works crews, your utility people running the, you could make an argument, I think, for the vast proportion of the organization to be in somehow, some way, needed in an emergency response. We are not doing that. We are saying that what we think is the construct of the law and the intent of the law was to carve out your people who are going to be on the front lines of this public health crisis. And as you can see in the resolution, what we're looking at recommending, staff's recommendation would be to include as an exemption to these previous policies, all sworn police personnel, all sworn firefighter paramedics, all dispatchers and dispatch supervisors, as well as all health department staff. If you think that is sufficient, then we can, why we can obviously have a discussion about it. But that's what the scope in this organization that we've put forward to fall under those exemptions for emergency responders and healthcare providers. We can make arguments about other groups being in there and that's, that's kind of why we're here tonight. That's what we think, that's what we think for our organization. And I think that's a kind of the most popular position among local governments around the state for sure.
Questions for Andrew? Comments?
Alderman, Kirkowski, first district. This might be threading a needle a little bit here, but you talked about temporary reassignments to the health department. And I would guess that the administrative folks would probably stay in-house, but you got the two school nurses that might be going out. So are you going to temporarily include the temporarily reassigned people to the health department under this umbrella? Or are you, how you, do you think about that? Did I open a can of worms?
We did think about that. And we, we hope that, we hope that we can include them under the term staff. However, the law also calls out specifically contractors that we might utilize. And if that's what we're calling these folks, we may want to add, we may want to, want to add that language of, and you know, associated contractors or something along those lines. But again, those aren't, I don't, we don't know, I don't know what Darcy's plans are for framing those people or what the relationship for, say, the, the school health nurses, if they're, you're just going to help us out and remain on the payroll of the school or whatnot. I don't know how that's all going to work out. But I think any, any, any time where we would be paying folks would, would be considered staff unless they're in an independent contractor role.
I, I guess my argument would be it wouldn't be a bad thing to include them, anybody working in the health department on her staff, whether permanent or temporary, because just hopefully nobody would get the community contact type COVID, you know, they would get it by being out there. And then he would come back to the health department and then you would have the school nurse or somebody else kind of contracted and they're kind of all in the same boat. They're in that environment. So I, I personally wouldn't have a problem adding, however, if you want to call them contracted or specially assigned or whatever, I wouldn't have a problem with that, just for making sure everybody is treated equally over there. My, my opinion.
With, with respect to the nurses from the school district, we have no ability to do that as they are not our employees. So we wouldn't be paying them either under the federal act. So I don't know that we could, sorry, get any, anything for them exempted.
I was like, a school board would have to try and come up with something to cover their, those two employees. Well, for your listening, school board.
But let's, let's, I think it's a good step and we did have this discussion, it just, we didn't settle on a preferred pathway other than just leave it as it is. Guess that was a preferred pathway. I think we can add and associated contractors to that language just to make sure we're covering bases if we're calling in, you know, resources from the bullpen that we can't think of today.
Works for me. Mike?
Alderman, Tillman, fourth district. What's the situation on, you're designating the essentially essential people, essentially, that they're emergency responders in this resolution? So is this, is this an all hands on deck situation? How are we handling this, like vacations, for example? What happens in those situations?
So because of the buzzwords in-- all of our circles are, I'm essential, I'm non-essential. I tried to differentiate between the fact of the governor's order to determine who's essential and who isn't. That's all sectors of our economy versus what the federal legislation affords us with carving out what we classify as healthcare providers and emergency responders. So there is a bit of a difference there. In, in response to your question specifically, vaca, any sort of time off is, is going to be uniquely handled when we run into these situations. And it's going to be very complicated if these individual groups, units of our workforce become ill or have to take care of somebody who is ill. Remember, they have the underlying FMLA anyway, right? However, we don't know what this all brings, Mike. So I don't know that I'm, I'm answering your question very thoroughly because there are 100 scenarios that we have tried with, whether police fire non-public safety folks to see how this, this thing is going to play out. And we just, we, we don't know exactly how everything we're going to encounter.
So, so as it stands now, if a police officer or firefighter has a scheduled vacation, they're still allowed to take it? Is that, is that what's going on right now?
I definitely defer to those gentlemen in the back.
And I guess a follow-up would be, are both departments on the same page, under the same rules? As vacation-wise?
As far as vacation, if they've had it scheduled, we have not changed our staffing levels at this point. Got it. We have not changed our staffing levels at this point, but we have had, because people can't go anywhere, I canceled more vacations than we ever have before. And those officers are all working now. That may cause bottlenecks later in the year that I have to deal with, but right now I have them available for staffing.
Just, just to clarify though, Steve, you didn't unilaterally cancel them. They couldn't go on said vacation. So they're like, well, I guess I'm not going to do that thing anymore. I'm going to, I'm going to assume my regular shift that I whatever, whatever.
It was a requested cancel. They, they asked to cancel their vacation. So that's where we're at, at the police department right now.
And fires model is, is very similar to that right now. We have had some, the current process allows an employee to pick up time off following certain parameters at work. We have had some employees pick up that time because travel, they are unable to travel at that point. We have not made any restrictions like police in the same regard to our staffing model currently. You know, obviously, we talked a little bit about the call volume and looking at the projections moving forward. We certainly have that ability moving forward to adjust as circumstances dictate. But at this time, we are, you know, in wait-and-see mode.
Yeah, I guess part of my concern was if one of our emergency responders does take vacation and they do travel, I mean, you're still allowed to travel. This is a safe red home. We're not on total lockdown. And, and you know, your department, it gets transmitted in your department, either department would be a big concern, I think, for the city.
And that, that is understood. And there has been guidance relayed throughout the city regarding the parameters of what happens if you do travel. That guidance is not taken lightly. It's done in consultation with HR and public health. That message has been communicated. We communicate that to our employees. If there is going to be a case of travel, this is potentially what could occur. And certainly, the employees are aware of that. They understand the risk of travel right now. They also understand that a good portion of the country in areas that are, are prime travel spots are under some sort of stay-at-home order also.
Any other questions? Ken, Greg, anything?
No, thanks.
I'm good, Dan.
Seeing--
Just note, do you want us to add that language? It's not, that's not going to impact the motion or the title of the resolution at all, but just some consensus here on adding a little broadening to the contractors we might, again, I don't see how they would be, let, let's, let's think of it as if we were to make temporary hires. I think that's probably the more important piece of this.
Yeah. Excuse me, Alderman Kirkowski, sure, I'd, I'd like to have that.
We can have that.
Motion on four then, please.
Kirkowski, make a motion, the council adopt resolution number 12149-033020 defining emergency responder and healthcare provider under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and authorizing the necessary amendments to the City of Oak Creek Personnel Manual to incorporate FFCRA and the related provisions of the Expanded Family Medical Leave Act Expansion and Employee Paid Sick Leave.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Ken?
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Before we move to adjournment, Darcy, any last parting words for us? Or are you just going to keep it on updates at the city website? I will implore all citizens though, please go out to our Facebook page, our website, take this very seriously. If you can help a neighbor out and do some shopping for them, give them a phone call, go by teleconference, limit the number of people where you need to go, keep it to essentials. We have to really maintain this quarantine for as long as we can if we're going to exhaust this and beat it in the long run and beat it back. I want to thank all the staff out there again. I can't, I can't express to the public just how much work's gone on here in a short period of time. And to complicate it, we do have an election coming up, which, which is being handled very graciously under a lot of pressure by our city clerks. So thank you, Catherine, and your staff and everybody else that's helping out. These are extenuating circumstances. We ask for your patience and understanding, but more importantly, your, your cooperation. I don't think any time, I know this for a fact in my lifetime, has it ever become more apparent just how connected we are as human beings and a community. And the only way we're going to get through this is together. And together we can get through it, but that means being apart for about two weeks at a time. So please, listen to our health officers. Chiefs, thank you very much for your leadership. Andrew, thank you. Bridget, Judy, everybody. If I missed you, I apologize. Mike, go ahead.
Catherine, is there anything new as of like the last hour on the voting news? I know it's changing.
Yeah, thought you were going to get away.
I've been here.
The last week, by the hour, but yes, it changed in the last hour.
It has?
Maybe not, maybe not this hour.
Not really. I mean, you know, I think the thing to stress is that all the requirements for, just like any other election, are still in place. You can request an absentee ballot through Thursday, April 2nd for regular voters indefinitely confined, can request them until 5:00 PM on Friday, April 3rd. Today is the deadline to register online, online for voter registration. And then you would have to come into the clerk's office here to register. The polling places are still going to be open right now as scheduled, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Remember to bring your photo ID and have some patience and be nice to the poll workers. They're brave souls right now. And we probably have already sent out a minimum of 6,500 ballots for the City of Oak Creek. So that pushes us well over 30%. We have 20,000 registered voters in the city. So we're doing a great job at the mail-in. The other really important question that we're getting asked quite frequently is yes, as it gets later in the week, we mail them every single day, all the ballots. Getting them back by election day by 8 o'clock is the tricky part by mail. So if you do receive your ballot and you're worried about it getting back to us on time, you can come to City Hall here and drop it in our outside drop box by 8 o'clock on election day and we will most certainly counter-vote.
Are we still doing in-person by appointment?
We are. Yep, we've had quite a few. We're doing that in the afternoon. As you can imagine, we're working diligently to get all those ballots out. So it made it a little bit easier for crowd control, for people to come in in the afternoon and vote. And we're doing quite a bit. And we'll be doing that through Friday at 5:00. If you'd like to make that appointment, you can call 766-7000, the main number at City Hall here, and we're making those appointments.
Here, I have one question for Catherine. Catherine, the City of Milwaukee today reported that poll workers, typically they have 1,400 that, that take care of the election process. And they've had significant numbers back out of that. I think 400 was the numbers that have committed to work. Are we seeing that here in Oak Creek?
Definitely. I think I'm at about 50% right now of what I usually have. We're just floating at the bare minimum. So we'll see what the next day or two brings. We do run a risk that if we have less than five at a polling location, we'll need to, you know, possibly make some changes with the locations. But right now, we're just on a very short staff. So I can't thank those, those poll workers enough for all their dedicated service and being willing to come in under these circumstances is a lot to ask. You know, but we're going to get through it. It's definitely challenging and it's posed some opportunities for us to make some changes. But yeah, we, we're very, very short on poll workers.
Thank you, Catherine.
And just one last reminder, our local businesses, a lot of them are shuttered or they're just doing takeout, carryout, things of that nature. Please, if it's within your means, patronize them. They are really suffering right now and we need to help them out as, as best we can. So again, they're doing their best out there. So if you can, do it locally. It's never been more important than now. So Alderman, anybody else have anything?
Nope.
No. Seeing none? Adjournment, please.
Kirkowski, make a motion to adjourn. Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Thank you. And again, be safe, be well, and follow the recommended guidelines. Thank you.